I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the pledge? Remain standing so Jerry Dusenberry from Monticello Christian Church can lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you tonight. We pray for your blessing upon the residents of this community. We pray for this gathering tonight and all the discussions would be unified. It would be seeking the best interest of all those involved in that through these discussions, that it would lead to more productivity or unity, higher quality of living. Father, to that end, that you would be honored and all that is done and said here. Jesus.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Here.
Mr. Woodham?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Vought?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 201402 and be limited to five minutes or less, and no one has signed in. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 201402 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone tonight?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated January 10, 2023 through January 23, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Excuse me, the consent agenda, which is the claims this evening. There is a move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing them, they have a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vought?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Some hats.
Thank you. Mayor's report. Upcoming events. The Monticello Area Chamber business kickoff is this Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. at the Monticello Community Building. Learn what the upcoming missions are for the Monticello Area Chamber, Make It Monticello, and Monticello Main Street Organization. As the city is significant contributor to these organizations, council members are welcome and encouraged to attend. Allerton Park Full Moon Hike will be held on February 6. The Monticello Railway Museum and Holly's Country Kitchen have partnered for a Valentine's Day Dinner Train, February 10th and 12th. Don't forget to check the Piatt County Job Board for local area business hiring. And on February 4, it's the annual Mud Puppy Festival at Monarch Event Center. It will be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Any comments or questions? At this time, I would like to present Lisa Shepherd with the Segment Valley CEO class.
Thank you for having us. We are a student-run, student-driven business organization, so I am going to let the students speak first because they're a lot more interesting than I am anyway.
Okay, thank you.
It's like we said, we're Segment Valley CEO. We're a business class at school, but we're not a normal business class. We don't ever sit in the classroom. And all of our experience is done in the real world, going to businesses and also doing our own businesses and those ways. And yeah, so like I said, I'm Jack Brown.
I'm Drew Shepherd, and I go to Monticello.
I'm John Graves, I go to Cerro Gordo High School.
I'm Addison Brown, and I go to Monticello. I'm starting in German from Monticello.
I have Williams Talbot from Monticello.
Cool, so I just kind of want to pass it off to these two to kind of explain how and they've seen some ways that the community has kind of affected our class thus far.
Yes, so CEO has been great for me personally. I own a nonprofit that I have been building for coming up on five years. And that means I started when I was 12. And I've been trying and I've been hustling for a while. But you know, it's hard to get anywhere without an organization backing me. And CEO has given me just that. And I'm able to go into meetings and I make connections now with the title of Segment Valley CEO, not my own organization. And that gives me that leg up. And I'm given a lot more respect. And I've been able to make a lot more progress and partnerships than I ever was able to.
And kind of going along with what she said, like, because we're so young, it's kind of hard to like feel that that people will take it seriously. But your guys' support like brings us confidence that we can do things like our class business and then also confidence for us to give you another way of the road to do individual businesses as well.
So, so in the spring, we do individual businesses. So like Jane said, she does her own, she's expanding on her nonprofit. And then I would be doing a little bit of, so I've been doing some lawn care and some tree trimming for my neighbors. I'm going to make that into my individual business. And Drew Shepherd, he's done some basketball camps in the past. And he's going to make that into his own business. So we've, we do a lot of site visits where we learn new skill sets. We can go back to those site visits and ask questions and potentially interview or get jobs from those site visits.
Yeah, so I want to talk about some like operations, starting from the very beginning of our class. The first, I think it was within three days, we learned that we're going to be completing a badge business. So we were told, your goal is to raise money to be able to buy our name badges that you see us with, so that we can kind of just be identified as a team as we go into different businesses. But we weren't taught how to do it. It's kind of our first, just getting thrown into the mix, like just figure it out. We had watched some informational videos from Midland Institute, which is the overarching company who runs CEO, about sponsorships. And so we knew we needed to go out on this community, ask different businesses that we knew, whether it's people we did know or didn't, for sponsorships so that we could have our badges. So some of these businesses in the community that ended up helping us out and giving us sponsorships for Curry Medical Center, HW, Kelly's Accounting, State Baker B. Mint in Monticello, Burgess decline, and then the city of Monticello. So with their support and help, we're able to get these badges to identify ourselves. And then we also got class T-shirts, which sport sponsors on the back. So that was kind of our way of just getting our first business experience, getting thrown into the mix, helped us learn a lot. And we would not have been able to do it without a lot of local community businesses. So we're very thankful for that. And then with the leftover money that we had from sponsors after purchasing badges and T-shirts, we then had money left over so that we could run a class business, which grows until it look a little bit more.
The class business, sorry, the class business that we had, we had in mid-December. And it was Miracle Off Main Street, where we hosted ornament decorating, cookie decorating, a hot chocolate bar, smores, and there was also a raffle there. And we had two different kinds of sponsors. And our activity sponsors were Subway, First State Bank, Top Point, Kestrel Homes. And then one of our general sponsors was New Land State Bank. And we tried not to go back to the same places to get sponsors multiple times. We tried to branch out and go to different places, Monticello. And it's one of the greatest things about Monticello is it has so many different options for businesses to go to, that we can really try just about anywhere. And doing these sponsorship meetings was relatively easy. Everybody we talked to was nice and perfectly fine, that we may not have had all the confidence that we do now. And it was a great learning experience, trying to ask people to give you money when you've never really done that before.
So I am super proud of the students. So the commitment they make to be a part of Segment Valley CEO. We're five different schools, Argenna, B. Metz, Cerro Gordo, D. Land Weldon, and Monticello. And we're run by Board Kelly's on our governing board. And Kevin Feeney is our board chair currently. But what it gives our students an opportunity to do is really connect with their local businesses. And we're so proud of all the communities and all the impact that they give these students. As you see, like in just a semester, how much confidence they gain and how much experience they get speaking in front of actual adults and business owners. And they do a great job running their own business. I'm the facilitator on purpose. I tell them that I'm here to help keep it legal and keep it moving and keep you going in the right direction. But you know, if it's legal and safe, then that's kind of the constructs of what the class business and the individual business venture have to entail. So they put themselves out there quite a bit. We do recruiting to try to get people from our class. We have three members who are unable to be here tonight. So this year, we're a class of nine. And this is our fourth year as the program, heading into our fifth. And I think the biggest joy as the facilitator is just to watch each and every one of them grow. No matter what student we've had, the person they've started when they walk in on day one and the person we see leave coming out the door is a more confident, more engaged, better networked individual. It's been fun now that we've been in a few years to get to hear some feedback from former students. One, there's so many good stories, but one of them I was just told last week by Ed Williams is that we had a, the COVID year was a tough, I mean, they were just in a tough position that every time they would get some steam, they would be regulated back to COVID guidelines. We all know how we did it with it as an adult. So for students, that was very, very difficult. So we did have a couple of students who dropped that semester that year. One of the girls who dropped that semester reached back out to her mentor, Ed Williams, just in the past few weeks and is now doing well. And even from that semester with our program, had the confidence and knew that she could go back to her mentor and reach back out and say, okay, I'm in a better place. I'm studying interior design. I know that that's what you did, and you give me some advice. So lots of great stories. I won't go on and on all night long. But thank you for having us and thank you for the opportunity for our students to present. Want to open it up for questions from all of you to ask them.
What is your business focus? I know a couple of you already mentioned, but Jack?
I think I'm going to do, this kind of sounds weird, but I'm going to do chicken wing seasonings.
Oh, yeah. Sure. I've got a secret recipe I could share with you if I get a portion of the profit.
I'm trying to do like low sodium ones to like market better health, too, but still have like the same flavor.
Yep. Nice.
I'll be running summer basketball camps for youth. I'll be doing lawn care business along with tree trimming in the winter just to, so I can have a full range of things.
I'll be doing photography because my kindergartener's my mentor. So and I always have a passion for it, so not a better way to start it out with him. And I already mentioned, but I'm expanding on my not the profit that raises awareness to the cancer content.
I'm making tiaras.
Nice.
So a couple of things that we could use your help on for as a community is that right now, we're recruiting. So if you know a junior in any of those schools, the application window is open right now. I think with it being a little bit different of a program, our toughest sell is them like being able to make that jump and realize, okay, it's, it's difficult, but it's also rewarding. So if you know a junior, please encourage them. We have some junior experience days where they can just come try it out. You can check out our Segment Valley CEO Facebook page is the best way to get information on those. My contact information is on there. Kelly's contact information, if you need to get ahold of us to get somebody involved. And then the application window is open till February 15. So would really like another great class for next year. And then attend trade show. May 4 is their date for that. We're working on a location, but put May 4 on your calendar and come back and support all their efforts and everything that they're doing.
And to follow up on that, if you do follow the Segment Valley CEO Facebook page, they post anything from where they visited, what the topic of discussion was, to when they start diving down into their individual businesses or what last semester when they were working on their class businesses. So you learn more about what they're doing, what process they're in their individual businesses when we ramp up towards trade show and we're getting closer to that date. Go start seeing products or marketing that they come up with because again, it's their business. It's just a really exciting time. I would put them against any veteran business owner at the end of the program any day because they do such a great job. They behave so much better than a lot of adults that we work with, as you guys know. But it's just been really rewarding to see them grow over time. We've had, you know, there's five schools involved, so that's five communities that we can tap into because the point of this program is to engage them and get them connected with their communities. We know they might go away, but at least they know this is where their roots are. This is where they can come back to. This is where there's opportunities for. And one thing that I hear over and over again is, I didn't know this was, I didn't know that was there in their own community. You guys want to share favorite businesses so far and why it was? What surprised you about it? Go, Jack.
All right. So I think my favorite thus far has been the 4MC construction business. And I didn't realize how big a company they actually were. I was kind of just your local small construction company. But then when we go there, we found out that they worked in every state except one, right? So, and they do work for pretty big companies like the NFL and NASCAR and stuff like that. And I thought it was really interesting.
My favorite was, we went over to WCIA 3 Champagne and just got to see the scenes of their morning show. Got to see the broadcasting side and like the people up front and talking. And we also saw the behind the scenes production side. So I just thought that was really interesting.
Yeah, my favorite was also 4MC. I really liked it because it was, they did a lot of structural stuff. That's sort of something I wanted to, I was very interested in doing like civil engineering in college. That's so awesome.
My favorite was Quinn Marketing over in Champagne. We got to meet with someone who specializes in just like marketing and posting on social media since I was the marketing manager for our class business. It was super informative to me to like see behind the scenes and some other things that I could do to kind of spice up, to get our word out about our individual business and class business.
Yeah, my favorite was probably WCIA. They have a really cute dog there. But that was a great connection. I actually reached back out to the Morning Anchor. I got a few segments on there for my INFP.
I really liked when Suzanne Wells from Wells and the Bars took us all around the square to look at the different businesses. And then she actually assigned each of our groups, because there were three groups of three, to a different space and what we would build or design to make that place a business. And I thought that was really interesting.
That's probably my favorite part about this. I think they've been growing and all that about this program is Suzanne is really good about taking them to different sites in our community. And what would you envision? What kind of business would you create? Terry's a part of that panel as well. And you have to admit, the ideas are very impressive.
Yeah, some of the, and I've been at each one of them. Some of these young adults come up with some really fascinating and intriguing uses of current spaces available. The Red House, Runners.
Peps and Hill's always.
Peps and Hill's always won.
Whether they're available or not, just what they would envision for that site.
Yeah.
So these are, these are what we like to see. We like to see new ideas and new engagement. Any questions, you guys?
What's been your, what's been something that you've seen growth in yourself since starting CEO?
I don't know, I feel like my communication skills got better. I used to be that person that would never read their email, except like one or two weeks. And now I learn to kind of keep an eye on that kind of status.
I'm probably just taking advantage of your resources and the people around you. Not just kind of pushing things off, I guess, to do later in procrastination, I guess. Just kind of getting on top of things and building it with it. I mean, it's really just been being able to talk in front of a bunch of people. It's something I struggled with when I was younger, but now I've gotten more used to it. So it's not a big deal anymore.
I will say, John rocks the radio interview.
Yeah, I agree with John. For me, it was the public speaking because like I would never be the type of girl that would be doing something like this, but here I am. So I think similar to Drew, like taking advantage of everything I've been given just for a while, it was still, I saw them, I said that, I was a kid, I couldn't do it. I've definitely gotten better at teamwork, especially through badge business and then definitely through class business where we have to be more defined and conquer. I'm still not great at it, but it is something I can work on. And I know I have improved at least a little bit.
Anyone have questions, Mary?
It is just an absolute joy to see you all as you are now, remembering when you were, and I know not everyone, but those kindergartners and first graders. And just to see where you are now and the opportunity that you've had to step away from the traditional school role and to take advantage of this program. And I'm just, I'm so proud of all of you. Good job.
And they show up at seven, our class meets from 7:30 to 9:00. But we say CEO time is at 7:15. So that if there is a mishap where we're in different businesses, usually two to three times a week. So in case there's a mishap with getting there, then we're prepped and ready and walking in at 7:30 no matter what. And even second semester, they're walking in, showing up at 7:15 every single day. So in business attire, like you see them in now.
Anyone else?
I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So it's for junior year and then, oh, okay. So I was just confused because the applications, you take junior and junior year. You apply as a junior.
Apply as a junior.
You're spotted. Okay, sorry. Thank you. And then does the, does the group provide, like, so once students graduate, if they continue? Is there, is there any sort of support for them after, words through the organization?
Not yet. We're, our board has gone kind of in the process of starting those conversations. We're new enough that what we find is the trend is that a majority of our students go on to college endeavors, although we very much promote, you know, doing the trades and that the trades is a really great option. One of the neat things is, is like when we're at HW, they present a trade program that they have with their business. And they get a full breadth of business owners with college degrees and masters in business who have a high school degree, you know? Like they really learn that their work ethic and what they want to do with that and how they want to network with the opportunities they've been given really matter.
That's awesome.
But yes, it's apply your junior year now until February 15. It's a blind application process. Kelly's the only one who knows the names. She does a good job of redacting all those names so that a separate committee gets those applications without name in school. And then that committee selects our group for the next year.
How many, is there a limit? Because obviously, it's a small group.
It's a big group.
That?
Yes.
Well, okay. But I mean, out of five, five, five high schools, that's a lot of seniors. And so you're.
Could be up to 20.
Up to 20. Oh, wow.
Only 14 people applied last year and about five of them either didn't get references in or decided not to take the class. We've never even had up to 20 applications.
Okay.
We'd like to have that problem.
Yeah. It's a great program.
We've got a great board who will cross that bridge.
Yeah. Anyone else? I'd certainly like to thank you for appearing this evening. It's, it's always nice to see how young people progress during their year. When this program started, I was impressed with it. And the longer it goes on, the more impressed I am with it. So congratulations on what you've accomplished and good luck this spring. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, you don't have to stay if you don't want.
I'm trying to live a riveting conversation.
It's going to be you because I'm not going to be. Okay, moving on. Ordinance 202307 and ordinance amending chapter 51 of Title 5 of the municipal code of the city of Monticello. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 2023-07 amends chapter 51 of the municipal code. This would be water. We'll be coming back to the city council, hopefully next council meeting, to address the sewer portion of the municipal code. So occasionally, we go through the municipal code and update from bigger things to smaller things, like it's still, a lot of sections still have superintendent of city services. That's no longer valid, it's city administrator. So things like that. We have a couple of work smiths on staff right now. Callie and Maura and Nicole. Nicole's the head work smith. So she went through this, this piece of the municipal code and corrected all of those typos, if you will. But a couple of things of interest with this one is a landlord kind of situation that we ran into. That's increasing a deposit from $75 to $100. And then increasing the one-inch service tap from $750 to $1,000. The $750 barely covers the cost of the meter and pertinences. So it is recommended the city council discuss and approve ordinance 2023-07 as submitted.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve this 202307?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Once more, any questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vought?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to aldermen's reports, we'll start with Ashley. Nothing?
Very quiet.
That's okay. Ryan?
So I just wanted to point out that I'm still not on the website. So maybe my anonymity is leading to my no report.
Would that be?
It means I get no emails, no complaints.
Supposed to, who was supposed to hook you up?
Well, I got the email, but I didn't, I'm not listed on the site, on the things.
We get you taken care of.
All right.
If you ever have a question, the best thing to do is call Maura or call Callie.
To be honest with you, I checked.
Jill, text Terry.
I checked today.
Text Terry.
So if you want to give a shout out to Terry and the city crew, one day this week, I think it was Monday, I was going to Circle K to get my coffee. And I hit a, I hit a pothole and it jarred me. And I thought, we need to get that taken care of. So I was going to call Terry the next morning and invite him to fill it, taken care of. So.
That's how things happen sometimes. I think you get one freebie before, you know, it's your freebie. So don't get used to that. Ian?
I don't have a picture of me on the website. I don't know.
Is that all?
That's true.
I'm not in charge.
I can better, looks better, doesn't it?
Actually, it does. Thomas?
Nothing.
Nothing? Michael?
Hey, I, I want to encourage folks to come and speak in public participation. I know that there, there has been several conversations that I've had with people around town that have issues or whatever. And I, you know, and I take them and pass those on to the city. But I'm always appreciative of those that come out and speak in public participation because it happens at the beginning of meetings, so they don't have to stay for the rest of it. And I think it was great last week that we had several on this council that, you know, spoken and responded to the person that came for public participation. I think it, it says that, you know, it doesn't always mean that if we don't feel compelled to comment that, that we're not listening. But I think it's, it's an important gesture that several on this council decided to comment on what was presented. several on this council decided to comment on what was presented, so I would encourage that to continue to keep the dialogue open between here, the council, and those that come to speak, and encourage more to come and participate in public, you know, that we're here, that's what it's here for, is to speak on behalf of issues and things like that, and it can be positive or negative, we're here to listen, and I appreciated all those that commented last week, so.
Robbie? I don't feel compelled to comment. Thank you. Wendell?
Well, I thank the fellows on the street department and whoever else chimed in or knew Terry had, it looks like the retrieval of our arid brown totes has gone well. I've gone all over my, biggest part of my ward anyway, and they look like the majority of them are gone. Thanks to the guys for picking them up, I know it wasn't a fun job, but had other stuff to do, and the removal of the Christmas decorations from the square, I'm sorry to see them go, but they did have a day that they could get those down, so I appreciate all their help, it looks good.
Thank you. Mary?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Tight-lipped, huh? Okay. City Administrator, Terry?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Kind of like having my birthday party. At this time, the council is going to go into closed session under 5 ILCS 120/2C1, Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees. When we come out of closed session, there will be no business undertaken, so we're just gonna get together and talk about a couple of things. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, folks.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? See you in two weeks. Thank you.